Form at the beginning and the end, I'm just caution you to remember that.
Not say to do that, I would just say there's an option. Which we already have an option to do that, but. I would figure move it to the front.
He's looking to see what this is. So the only one I can see is the letter I. This is a limit of one time, any one person may speak at each meeting or committee unless a majority of the board by a firm vote agree to allow additional time. If granted, the time limit for the second addressee is two minutes. So i- if they want, if this board said, okay, you know, they asked to speak at the end again, then you can allow them up to two minutes as long as this is the same person.
And the board votes on it?
The board, the board would vote to decide whether or not to grant them that extra time. So it's kinda in there?
Yeah.
Pretty good with that, then we can move the H up to the beginning instead of at the end. Sound reasonable to everybody? I'll get it together, I can't move on it tonight. We've got to do a resolution change on this, but I'm just asking, is that what the board wants to do before I go through getting a resolution, prepare to do this?
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it. As long as it's gonna be one or the other.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just at the beginning only then?
Right.
Unless?
Right, okay, that's fine, two minutes.
At the end?
Yeah.
It's only for the same person.
Yeah.
Cause you'll get somebody like you though, who will not watch the end of your job, man. I'm just kidding.
All right.
That's assault.
So if we're good with that. Um, last bit I haven't talked about, 175th anniversary, and before I begin to that, I wanna pass out these things. Well, maybe I'll do that before I forget to do it. Uh, 175th anniversary, we got a ton of stuff going on that right now. Howard's been active, Barbara's been very active on it, Mike has been helping. He got horse rides and petting zoo together for me. Mindy has been helping a lot, um, getting information for us. So, right now, it looks like. We got Bullleg playing August 12th down at River Street Park, six to nine. We got an Elvis impersonator singer that can sing up here during the day. We have the parade invitations all sent out, but we have some responses back already. We looked at food, it's gonna be a busy weekend for the town. The Legion has their summer picnic party going on up there that same day. Casella has their open house that day up at the landfill. And we're having our 75th anniversary and the parade in six, uh, two to six, we're having a field day down here. So it's gonna be a busy one. Looking at doing food. Mindy checked into the cotton candy machine down there, popcorn machine, um, bouncy house, bouncy obstacle thing, and then a blow up slide too also. So, uh, Mike had checked in to see if we could get a, I guess we go on the carnival, right? But they were all booked up already. We checked in about a month and a half ago, two months ago, so we couldn't get that. As far as the parade, I just set in, we set in. Think the New York State DOT for a permit for that, it was four weeks ago, three weeks ago. I just got the rest of the information back today with the parade group, they need, uh, they needed this to show the detour and how it's gonna, how the parade route's gonna be. That's gotta go to, uh, Bill Domine, Lieutenant Domine of the Sheriff's Department. Once he gets this in my letter, which I sent him today, he'll approve it. And then once New York State DOT knows that the Sheriff's Department is on board, then they'll approve our permit, that's the last thing we're working on there. If anybody's got any ideas, we're gonna ask every, every business owner that is in our town to come and set up a booth, um, so that they can recognize and let the general public know who they are. I think that's where we're at. Like I say, we talked about trophies today for the parade. I got, uh, I am gonna need judges for the parade, for the viewing stand. So if we can come up with a couple of names for that, if anybody wants to be a judge for the trophies at the end. We're gonna set that up, I got ahold of Knights of Columbus, and they're gonna allow us to do the viewing stand there at Knights of Columbus. And then out here, we'll have the stage, so to speak, for, uh, the opening ceremony. And we're gonna use the field in the back for the rest of everything else. Is it Dream Farm?
Capital Dream Farm.
They're gonna be here horse riding, wagon ride. And you're bringing down a couple horses for pony rides, donations to go to cart, you said, right? What do we can do? That sounds like a good plan, hopefully.
What kind of parade supposed to be?
So that's why the opening ceremony, the question would be two o'clock. That way, I get two hours for that parade to get done. I'm guessing that would be.
And your road printer parade's gonna be what?
Parade group. So we'll line up on Bravo. If it's overflow, then it'll start lining up down Mason. First come, first served. So if you put your application in and we get it, like we've already got some back already, that'll be your number. If you're number one, two, three, four, it'll go by when we use the application, that way somebody can't say, well, I wanna know why I'm number 26, we're back in the parade, okay? So that's the way we do it. Yes, sir.
Got a question, are they allowed to hand out candy?
Sure.
Is there rules on candy?
Huh?
Any rules on candy, throw out with the vehicles, anything?
No, um, the only thing that we put in there is that they have to be safe. So, you know, no burnouts, you know, and you do get some of this. We actually got classic cars that are already said, 20 classic cars that are gonna be here for the parade already. So like no onset starts and that kinda stuff, but throwing out candy, you know. I know there's, there's some parades, like the city at one point didn't do it on the fourth of July, cause the phrase, this kid was gonna run out underneath the fire truck trying to get a Snickers bar or a Tootsie Roll or whatever, but, um, now just, everybody's gotta be careful and pay attention, so I got no problems with that. Political, I think we got a couple already that are, will wanna have an entry into the parade and walk the parade. So it's a work in progress, uh, we're doing pretty good with it, I was a little nervous for a while to get things rolling, but, uh, it looks like we're going. Parade group, like I said, line up on Bravo. Detour will be at Staley until they clear Flat Rock Road. Once they clear Flat Rock Road, the parade coming off of Bravo.
Or did you get this?
What's that?
Oh.
The whole thing.
Oh, okay.
It's got a map on it.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Should be in the boxes. But, uh, like I said, it'll, it'll, as soon as they get by Flat Rock, they'll move that detour up to Flat Rock Road and around. Uh, excuse me. Bill Domine said he's good, um, he'll make sure we have enough deputies around to control the roads. So.
Now, is your parade Saturday or Sunday?
Saturday.
Sunday is good.
Yep, Sunday's just gonna be the field day, two to six again, with Nick Bola that night, DJ karaoke. Fireworks I thought about, I don't forget the. The time to get donations, we're gonna need donations from local businesses, anybody wants to talk to anybody about donations, um, and help out with that, go ahead. If, uh, I will tell you that on average fireworks are gonna be about eighty-five hundred bucks for a decent show. I don't wanna blow our whole budget on fireworks, but I don't mind contributing some to it. Pretty much most of what we've got hammered out so far isn't really putting a big debt in, uh, the ten thousand that we appropriated this year for this 175th. But you can't take eighty-five hundred out of ten thousand and think you're gonna put the rest of this thing on fireworks, so we need donations to do fireworks. And then get somebody to take and let them on, so. If anybody's got ideas, wanna reach out to anybody, I had a couple reach out to me already. Is that the?
It's a solar farm. Okay. Did you see it up on San Diego, looks off? Has somebody do that?
Yeah, probably, I mean, I don't wanna put names out there, but one that comes to mining, Claus usually does it, like for.
I thought you were talking about a surveyor.
No, no, I meant like, probably somebody.
Nothing happened.
About me? I'm a fireman. So, um. We have had. A company that is interested in a solar farm in Towns, Scott Falls. So this is up on San Road. And this is their proposal. So Howard and I and, uh. He's losing my mind tonight. Tom Renee, thank you, sat down with their engineer and the two of them to discuss, uh, this solar farm. As of right now, that's something we're working on, been working on for almost, what, a year and a half hours, going on two years for the zoning up to date. We can always go by the state zoning if we don't have our own. What they would like to do is a special use permit for this. And, um, this. We have to, we really gotta work out some details on what is the town gonna get out of it. I think Champlain, I hate to say stuff on the record that I'm not sure about, so I'll just say Champlain, I heard, or somewhere about maybe thirty thousand dollars, they gave the town of Champlain to put one of these things in. What I had discussed with them. They said between five and ten, here it is. Uh, between five and ten thousand dollars per kilowatt is what they usually give. So basis of that would be like, that five would be twenty-five thousand, cause the five, okay? Fifty thousand if they give us the ten. And then each, including the town, or each resident that wanted to sign on board to get their clean energy from here would get a 10% discount on their bills. We always, we already did that, we did that like almost a year and a half, two years ago, when that gentleman came in and we already, was that already at that 10%? No, no break to discount kinda thing. But, uh, the residents would be allowed to also do that, that part of the solar farm. So at the end of the day, um, I got a call from these guys again today, want to know what we thought, whether they're gonna have to try to get a special use permit or usage variance. They would much rather try to get a special use permit, cause it's actually easier to do than a usage variance. There is some president sat already that a special use permit can be utilized for this because of, it's a, they're saying under, um, energy utility, that that does qualify for a special use. Tom Renee's doing some research for us, and he's gonna give us some advice, uh, what way we should move forward on that. But I wanted you guys to know that it's upcoming.
Where does he wanna do this?
So if you go, you know where Fatima is, up on San Road? It'll basically border Fatima back to San Road and then back. So the back part of that.
See that's Fatima?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's behind Charles Lake.
Just down from the dump.
Yeah, Fatima.
Behind Charles Lake, trailer park.
Okay.
So basically.
That's the trailer park by Dick McCaslin, you talking about?
Yeah.
So back there in the field?
Yeah.
Border and Darren Seymour.
If you look at the topography on here, and that was one of the things that Craig sell us on, um. That it pitches back, it don't pitch forward, so it's kinda like it's, you know, going up, that kinda pitches the other way, uh, away from it. My concern right off the bat were the houses on San Road and the ones on Fatima. I know I wouldn't wanna be looking out my back window of my home and looking at an array of solar panels. So the green space was discussed, it looks like, um, they put in a 25 foot green space here and a 50 foot green space here. I had Tom do some digging plumbinarily while he was here, cause I know that our mining's a hundred feet from a border for town zoning. We don't have any zoning on this, so we don't have anything that says that what the green area should be in the setback for the side. Uh, from, they're going by residential from 50 foot, 30 on the, you know, on the side, so they cut it to 25. I, I'd like to see somewhere in there, did he say, I think he thought he said, he said the, um, we're looking at, recommended by the state was, uh, was at least 52, right? On the side that day, can't remember.
I don't remember exactly.
It was a 75.
Yeah, I'm waiting for that to come back.
Yeah, so he's looking into that stuff, and I say he, our attorney, uh, he's looking into that to make sure that our setbacks are reasonable for what the state, um, likes to see, and for our residents to make sure that there's enough trees in the, you know, between them that they're not looking correctly.
How many acres is this?
Acreage. Thirty-three, uh, thirty-three point five six, almost thirty-four acres.
Is it all wood now?
No, some of it was old farmland, so it's new growth tree, early growth tree, small stuff, they're saying, nothing, not like we're taking out a hundred-year pine forest. And it's not utilized for agriculture, cause that's another issue that they run into when they're trying to do these, is the swap to agricultural land versus utility. Uh, so it.
It's kinda clear about here.
It fit very neatly underneath the guidelines, because for them to propose this project, again, they were throwing figures around, maybe eight million, a little over eight million dollars with their investment, to put one of these up. They're looking at a 10 to 12 year return, and then the rest of it profit. It's close to the substation, cause of Kent Falls Road. So they actually don't have to worry about running another connector line.
Now that percentage, you were talking about five to ten percent.
Per cent, yeah.
Is that in lieu of taxes?
At first I thought it was a Ducat farm.
Good question, so. It would be like, most of them do it as a pilot, so. And that's what I, I was looking at, I was like, all right, if they're gonna do.
It's actually tucked in behind.
We weren't gonna try the town to get as high as we can, right? But, um, twenty-five thousand a year to the town over the next 38 years, I said, he said that should last, right? Roughly before it's no longer feasible, because they biodegrade about 1.7% a year, the solar panels. Part of it would be naturally, we would want a bond, we want them to have a bond for reclamation, so that they can't just walk away in 38 years and say, here's all the stuff, have at it and keep it. So we would have them be bonded, so that they're required to do reclamation at that point in time, or start another contract, update all the solar at that time and keep rolling with it, but they can't just walk away from it. I, I made that very clear to them, that we would want them bonded and they would be responsible for reclamation. So 10 years, even at 25, that's 250,000, I'd like to see closer to the 10,000 rather than the five thousand.
Right now, I mean, is it on the tax roll?
Is this land on the tax roll? Yeah, but I think it's gonna be pretty much all agricultural land, or, or open space, you know, non, non, uh, what do you call it? Non-developed. It, it fits good in their boxes, it checks off a lot of their boxes, or they wouldn't be coming to us with it, and they wouldn't be pushing so hard to get it moving. They, they do their homework before they even come in to make sure it's worth their dollar and dime. We just gotta make sure that it's good on our end, and that we're doing the right thing, because they don't own the land, somebody owns the land of the town, and make sure that, being that we don't have zoning for it, that that individual is subject to, you know, for at least the planning board. Maybe the ZBA, but probably we wouldn't, uh, get a way to set up right now to get a special use, it would only be the planning board. And then the town board just reaching a grid. Is there anybody that's hard to know against this right now? I'm, I'm interested to hear a man. I, I did tell those three gentlemen, uh, I would much rather, I was dead honest with them, I said, I would much rather have you in here saying that you're gonna put in 55 homes by then, than this. The revenue to help the town out would be.
It'll be nice to hear what the adjoining landowners, how they feel.
Exactly.
You know what I mean, that's?
Yep.
Yeah, adjoining, and they cleared this with all these different landowners, or is this all one?
Uh, no.
This is just preliminary.
Yeah.
Okay.
At this point.
Yeah, but they would like it, the way they acted, they would like it done tomorrow, but it takes, it takes a process. And, uh, you know, like I said, at one point, I'm like, we can always set a moratorium, because they were stating a couple new case studies that says that, you know, by presidents, we can go ahead and do this under a special, you know, use permit, and I didn't like the way that was going, and I said, well, I got a meeting coming up in about two weeks, and I could set a resolution to say that we're putting moratorium on all solar project farms until after our zoning is done, if it worked out for a year and a half. And I kinda quieted that down, and then I kinda wanted to really work with it, so.
Howard, have you guys addressed that at all in your?
Yeah, it's actually, Tom is in, um, review right now of a model that was sent out by the, uh. What am I thinking of? Solar, uh, Nice.
Nice era.
And it's been changed over for Towns, Scott Falls, and just waiting for him to come back with it, so he put it in.
And how many leases are gonna go on the town? Because didn't?
I talked to him about that too, I said that.
We had, we had another gentleman here about a year ago, and he wants to do one too.
There was, there was actually, this'll be the fourth one proposed.
Right.
Okay, and the other, there's two of them that have did nothing. Because like I said, when they originally proposed it, we had a different, um, president and things, the money wasn't so available for Clean Green. Now that we have a newer president, um, the money for Clean Green is becoming available at the state and at federal level a little bit more readily. A couple of other projects, the issues too were, um, the connection, because they had to, like the one on Harsh Travel Road, they needed an interconnector to go into the mains. And the solar company thought that NISEC should pay for that, and NISEC thought, it's your solar farm, you know, we wouldn't need it unless we're trying to get your power to our grid, so you pay for it. So there was a back and forth there for about three or four months, and then I never heard anything about it. Although the owner of that property calls me pretty steadily, asking if there's anything I can do to help him out, uh, to, to move that thing forward, uh, as far as grants. He had even approached me as the town, um, trying to get a grant to put that interconnector in, I didn't feel comfortable doing that. I, I gave him a letter of support, like I said, I don't feel like the town should be taking the responsibility for a grant, I think that's something that you guys should do. And then the third one, they're moving some dirt, but, uh, they got a mining permit, but that's as far as they've gone.
That one on San River?
Yeah. But, uh, that's as far as that's gone. That one was better. This. Is the engineering. Let me right away, so I wanted you guys to be able to see that. So this is where our water tower is now. And this one section was the only two questions that were in play with the rocks at this time. They wanted to keep as many of these large white pines as they could, so he goes, these two I see are being removed, he was good with that, but he had questions about the other ones they had marked. I talked with RJ today, he goes, no, you're right, he goes, that's all that they're gonna remove is these two, which they were good with. He goes, but I'll re-verify this with the surveyors, just to make sure that they aren't taking those out. The other one is this section down here where it goes into the field, um, they wanted to make sure that they weren't clear cutting all this up here, and I said, no, this is clear and grub, entire easement in that location. So I said, that's just in, uh, the right of way. So I talked to JR about that today, and RJ about that today, and he goes, yeah, he goes, that's exactly what it means. So we should be good, otherwise we'd be cleaning out the house there. So it looks like this is almost good to sign, um, matter of fact, they're gonna start drawing up an easement for this, and this comes from the Flat Rock Road up to the water tower, and then everything else will be, the rest of the water will be on the Flat Rock Road to that part, so after the project's done, again, you can't expand the district until after, uh, there are some homes that we could pick up, um, on the Flat Rock Road. At the very least, you're gonna get all new hydrants down through there and water suppression. Any questions on any of that?
Is this in phase one, phase two?
This is phase one, the, that's the 12-inch main right from, uh, the bridge to the San Road, which the county should be taking care of, and then, uh, from San Road up to the water tower. This is all, all phase one. So it looks like we're pretty close to.
Isn't that, you spoke to the one person that they weren't sure about, the family?
Yeah, they're, because that land was put in a truck. Yeah, they're, because that land was put in a trust, um.
I think there's a boardroom in that trust.
So everybody has to sign off.
To sign off?
One.
You have one.
Yep, and, um. I don't know if they're gonna ask for anything besides what? The other three of Asgard, that water line, just to their mother's house. If that stands, then I think we're good. If not, and they ask for something, you know, different, then I will bring it all back to you guys to figure out whether it's doable or what it is. But I'm not sure. I think everybody else, again, I don't have a signed agreement with any of them, but I, I think everybody else is pretty much there other than the last sibling. I spoke to Kevin, he's gonna, um, contact the daughter-in-law, and he's supposed to get ahold of me. Uh, if I don't hear anything, cause we just met and spoke, man, we were down here a couple hours talking, so. Again, I don't have a, I don't have an easement in my hand, but it seems like they were agreeable to everything that we had discussed so far. I'll see if there's any other asks out of this, and if there is, we'll have to work on that separately. It's a parade route, so I think, uh, we should end our thing if I haven't missed anything. Yes. Thank you for reminding me. So, um, Howard's been working on, uh, a new schedule of fees for our zoning. I have to make copies for all of us. God, this looks like one of the guys at the jail that I've worked with forever. And I look at him, and I'm like, I like the teeth, but that's the, the guy that is. Gonna put the, uh, uh, solar in. Yeah, crewer. So if you guys wanna take a look at this, I expect you to give me an answer right now. But if you can give me an answer within, uh, the next couple of days or three, four days, uh, let's just say be, you know, give me twenty-four hours before the next meeting, cause we have to do this by a resolution to change this, the, uh, schedule of fees. And I'd have to have done a, uh, do a resolution on this one, so.
Do we have anything with the list of what the fees are right now?
The comparison and, uh, yep.
Yeah, you should have had a, uh, full comparison sheet earlier, a couple of, last month or month before.
I remember, I think it was last meeting we gave it to them.
Nothing went up dramatically though.
No.
But we haven't. We haven't changed the schedule of fees since I think they're.
April first, twenty twenty, twenty oh two.
Twenty oh, two thousand and two?
Two thousand and two.
All right, so we're working at twenty-one years? Twenty-two years, I think we changed.
Some of the biggest changes were, um, addition to some of the stuff that wasn't addressed in the first place. Other than that.
Stuff in red is what we're changing? Or is that blue?
The stuff in red was not even addressed before. We never had any fees for the planning board.
Right. And then the numbers in blue are what we're changing?
Uh, those are added in, yes, so.
Well, I don't wanna put words in Howard's mouth, but basically I think he looked at some municipalities that are close to the same size as ours and what they're charging for fees. And we've, uh, married somewhere in the middle of our fees.
There's one, basically one town was a little lower. This is on par with two others, and there's two others in that that were.
Right.
Hold there.
Take the one.
And I'm in the office, if you wanna give me a call on any of it.
Looks like the. So it looks like, uh, the biggest fee I see on here is like two hundred bucks or?
Um, I think the biggest is, uh, first, commercial, uh, thirty thousand gallon, I think that's five hundred dollars for that tank.
Two hundred, twenty, twenty thousand or more square foot of, uh, commercial, right? For new renovations or altercations.
Yep. But then you got thirty thousand gallons or over per tank for industrial, uh, hazardous storage is five hundred. Cause those are the ones that have to be inspected every year and everything else, so.
All right, so I would say, if you got any questions, please get ahold of Howard, not me. And then, uh, if you're good, let me know at least a couple of days before our next meeting so that I can have a resolution put in place to adopt these. We'll overdo on that in twenty something years.
No need to adjourn.
No need, cause it's a, another little meeting.
Anybody wanna copy the old ones? We'll have them tomorrow, man, I'm ready for you.
Yeah, cause I'm sure I got it, I just, be, I'll do it if I can just.
And I'll get ahold of RJ tomorrow to lock down where that van should be at, so I can let everybody know I had it down.
Okay.
All right, thanks everybody.